Good evening. At this time, if you would, please silence your phones and be advised that these proceedings are being recorded. If you desire to address the City Council during the meeting, please complete a request to speak form available at the front entrance and present it to the city clerk. Speakers will be called upon at the appropriate time and each person is allowed three minutes At this time, I will call to order the City Council meeting for the City of Grand Terrace for January 28th, 2020. Our invocation tonight will be offered by Pastor Harold Cortez of the Seventh Day Sabbath Church, and our Pledge of Allegiance will be led by San Bernardino County Sheriff Lieutenant Doug Wolfe. If you would, please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I, on behalf of the Seventh Day Sabbath Church, I thank the city clerk Deborah Thomas for the invitation to come in in God's hands today, Grand Terrace Council session. Dear loving Father in heaven, first let me say thank you. On behalf of Mayor, the members of Grand Terrace Council, and any distinguished person gathered here this evening, I respectfully request that you preside upon the council session this evening. Please give them your spirit of love, kindness, patience, and tolerance. Grant them your wisdom for the understanding of the issues to be discussed, wisdom for the decision-making, their process, and the implementation of them. I pray for a special blessing upon Mayor Dersie McNaboe for the various levels of city officials, and in particular for this assembled council and the word of the prophet, as in the word of the prophet Moses, he blessed them with these words. The Lord bless thee and keep thee. The Lord makes his face shine upon thee and be gracious unto thee. The Lord lifteth his countenance upon thee and give thee peace. Amen.
Thank you Lieutenant Wolfe. Madam City Clerk, may we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Allen.
Present.
Councilmember Hussey.
Present.
Councilmember Robles.
Present.
Mayor Proton Wilson.
I am here.
Mayor McNaboe.
Present.
Madam Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. So let's see, we have all these new faces in the council chambers. They look like winners to me. We have a special presentation tonight, and we're going to start with our Grand Terrace Titans Junior All-American and Junior Pee-wee Team Recognition. If Hayward Robinson would come forward, please. I would like you to tell us about your league and what you've accomplished, and then we have some present certificates to present.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council Members. My name is Hayward Robinson. Actually, if you don't mind, I'd like to acquiesce to my commissioner because he was really looking to come up here and talk about, and he's the captain of the bunch today, so I want him to come up here and share the things about his team and everything, if you don't mind.
Please do.
Mr. Wendell Fields. You guys already know about me.
Thank you for welcoming us tonight. I just wanted to say a few things about organization. It's been eight years in the making where we've competed against chapters from all over the island empire, and this year, these young men accomplished a goal. When the season started, we lost our first game to the City of Marietta. After that loss and practice, the team kind of responded as you would want, coming together as a team, working harder, preparing harder. Almost made a commitment that we're not going to let that happen again. The next week, we played the City of Paris, who was in the championship the year before, and we kind of were underdogs that game. But the team showed resolve, they showed a commitment to winning, to playing together, and we won that game 26 to 0. So after that game, I think we found out we have a pretty good team, we have an opportunity here to do something special this year, moved on to the third game, which was against our rival, the City of Colton. And that game, that our team was well-prepared, very excited, and we won that game 33 to 0. Moving on through the season, moving on through the season, we finished 10-1, we scored a combined total of 363 points, averaging about 36 points a game, 35 points a game, and defensively, we only gave up 39 points through 11 games. They did an outstanding job of representing the City of Grand Terrace well, having the honor and privilege of playing at a beautiful high school, and what's important to me for these kids is they did it with dignity, they did it with sportsmanship, and they did it with class. So if we could, just a round of applause for the Grand Terrace Junior Pee-wee Champions. And last, just want to thank Hayward Robinson for making this all possible. He had a vision of bringing youth football to Grand Terrace, and Hayward from the team, we thank you for making this possible for us. And last, if I could, just one of our inspirational leaders for the team, I would like to come up and just say a few words on behalf of the team in closing for us, please. Nathan Garcia.
First, I just want to thank God for allowing me to be here. I've been through a, like, I went through a bad injury last year. I had a stroke, and the doctor said I might not be able to play again, but I just, we just kept on praying, and we, I was allowed to play again, and I'm glad that I came back to here because we won the championship, the best season I had by far. If it weren't for my offensive line, I couldn't have done it. All my teammates, they're here for me, they helped me get to this championship and helped me with everything. And yeah.
Again, thank you very much. Very proud of these kids, and I look forward to them continuing their academic and athletic career and representing the city very well. Thank you very much.
Well, the council likes to celebrate with our teams and our youth when they accomplish, and they do so carrying the name of Grand Terrace especially, making sure that you are setting a good example and you're really carrying the reputation of our city. So thank you for being here tonight and allowing us to celebrate with you. I'm going to ask if my colleagues have a couple of words, and then we'll have you join us for certificates in a picture, okay? Councilmember Allen.
Absolutely. I would just want to offer my heartfelt congratulations. I am so proud of each and every one of you and all the effort you put into on behalf of yourself, your team, and to recognize that you carry the name of City of Grand Terrace, and we love you for that. Thank you so much for what you did.
Wow, congratulations. My son played football, he was in Colton, they had Grand Terrace team then, and I remember when he was your age, they didn't win the championship or the Super Bowl, but they made it all the way up and they won the CIF championship, and they were underdogs that year too, but it was the best thing that we'll never forget and made friends and family for life because your teammates are your family. And to this day, those boys, us parents, we still hang out, and they're 26, 27, they've been to numerous weddings, baby showers, and now they're out there coaching and doing stuff, but it's a family-oriented thing, and then when Coach Strauss, God rest his soul, he would come out there and watch us practice on the Junior Pee-wee All-American, you know, and he would say, "That's going to be my next championship team." And why? Because we were brothers, they were brothers, and they played, and they were family, and they knew that they had each other's back. It's like you guys, on and off the field, leadership, people look up to you, compassion, you're helping everybody out, and parents, you know, it's a great experience, great opportunity, you know, it's just wonderful memories, and congratulations, boys.
Team members, don't ever forget this excitement that you feel when you're in the process of working with your team members and going after that goal. From this time forward, if you can summon that energy and apply it to the rest of your life, it'll always work for you, no matter what happens. So I congratulate you, and keep on charging.
I just have to say, congratulations to all you parents. I know this is a sacrifice for your kids, and I hope all you kids appreciate that, and I really am inspired by the setbacks in health that one of you had to overcome, and I just send out all my blessings to you for a good win.
So each of you will receive a certificate that is presented to the Grand Terrace Titans Junior All-American Junior Pee-wee Team in celebration of your accomplishments, Southern California Junior All-American Super Bowl Champions, presented this 28th day of January 2020, signed by me and my fellow council members. We also have a pin for you that is the logo, the seal of the City of Grand Terrace that you can wear, and when people ask you why you're wearing that, you can tell them about your victory and your teamwork and how wonderful your coaches and parents are, okay? So we'll go over here and we'll start calling your names. How about now? Yay! All right, so the first on my list is Stephen Agueyo. Mr. Garcia, nice job on your public speaking. Josiah Marrero, thank you. Xavier Olivier, or Oliver, Xavier Oliver. All right, coaches, we want to recognize you and all your hard work for helping these young men to get where they ended up this year. We'll start with Wendell Fields. Now I see something that looks like a trophy there. I think you need to show that off. That's pretty awesome.
Super Bowl Trophy Award-winning SoCal.
All right, if you would, we would like to get a picture with you.
Mayor, we have one thing we'd like to present to you guys as well. Coach Field's going to get it for you right now.
Oh, that's wonderful. So we can hang that up in City Hall. That's wonderful. Thank you very much. I don't know how you're going to show both sides of it.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Keep up the good work. All right, our second special presentation tonight is a presentation by the Director of Strategic Development for OmniTrans regarding Connect Forward Proposed Service Changes. Sorry Jeremiah Bryant, this is a tough thing to follow.
That was going to be my opening. It's a tough act to follow a championship hometown team. I mean, again, again, I'm Jeremiah Bryant, Director of Strategic Development for OmniTrans. I'm here today to talk about our Connect Forward Plan, which is a proposed service adjustment that changes service throughout the entire area we serve. This presentation is part of a significant public input process that includes 22 meetings in addition to several council presentations throughout the 15 cities and county that OmniTrans serves. We did have a meeting last night effectively at the Senior Center, Community Center, the goal of which was to get feedback specifically related to the changes proposed for the City of Grand Terrace. This is a furtherance to that effort last night. Last night, we did receive approximately 54 comments and had between 25 and 30 individuals provide feedback. Again, we will look forward to hearing feedback from council and if any public speakers come after this as well. Again, as I mentioned, this is part of an extensive public input process. Our goal is to gather feedback throughout our meetings to ensure that there are no unattended consequences of the plan so that we can adjust to those as may be needed, and I'll talk about that process as we move forward. Again, the plan we're working on is called the Connect Forward Plan. The purpose is to prepare OmniTrans to really do two things. One, to ensure that we have a future, meet the future regional transit needs of the communities we serve, and then also to ensure that OmniTrans has a long-term financially sustainable future so that we can continue to meet those needs on an ongoing basis. Again, as we've talked about in all of those public meetings, the plan does include a number of service changes really designed to realign our services with ridership levels that we see in the communities we serve, and also to ensure that we're serving some of the areas with the greatest needs, and demonstrated through the ridership levels that occur. As a result, we do have a number of proposals. Those do include frequency changes, changing how often the bus comes, route realignments, moving exactly where routes serve, some route eliminations, we'll talk about one of those in Grand Terrace and the realignment that sort of corresponds to that, and then new routes and services. Again, I'm going to talk specifically today about the changes in Grand Terrace. However, if you would like additional information about the services throughout the 15 cities we serve, please visit omnitrans.org/ConnectForward, and there's a lot more detail than I'll go over tonight. Additionally, at the, as you enter the room, we did leave a number of brochures which have that full detail that's also available on the website if anyone would like any of these brochures. Again, why are we developing a Connect Forward Plan? Well, OmniTrans, like many transit agencies, particularly in California and throughout the country, have seen significant sustained ridership declines. Over the last five years, OmniTrans, in line with industry trends, has seen about a 25% reduction in ridership. Obviously, we cannot maintain the same service levels with, when losing approximately a quarter of our customers. So what we proposed is, in order to make sure that we have a financially sustainable future, implement an 11% system-wide service reduction. We took great care in figuring out how to develop a system reduction plan. We understand that anytime you look at changing services, there are people that are impacted, but we needed to come up with guiding principles to ensure that we had a equitable, as much equitable way forward as possible. The eight principles on the screen are the principles that we as staff proposed with our board. We did also get approval from our board that I'll talk about later on these principles. I think one of the things that was crucial moving forward with our board that was actually very ultimately beneficial to Grand Terrace, initially, staff presented the first seven items as our guiding principles, which was really an approach to minimize the impact on customers, which is something we're very much trying to do, make sure that we keep the services where they're used most often, and then we wanted to take a business approach, which meant we needed to use as much data as we could possibly use to ensure that we were maximizing our usefulness and our services in the future. However, if we took a purely data-driven approach, some communities would have been purely left without service. In our discussions with our board, it became clear that that was not an acceptable outcome. So one of the eighth, or the eighth guiding principle that came on with information from our board, and again, with support from Mayor McNaboe, who is one of our board members, was to make sure that we provided service to all JPA members, which means all 15 cities we serve, including the City of Grand Terrace. Currently, Grand Terrace is served by one route, which is Omnigo Route 325. It starts a little south of the county line in High Grove to make a connection with RTA. It then travels north on Michigan, ultimately to Barton, before connecting over to the VA Hospital. Our proposal is to currently eliminate Omnigo Route 325 and replace it with an extension of a new route, that new route's called Route 305. Route 305 specifically starts at the San Bernardino Transit Center, where we would have connections to MetroLink, many regional connections that may ultimately, that they go into far into the West Valley, including Ontario Mills Mall, the Montclair Transit Center, where you have connections to buses that go well into LA County, and has connections that go into the High Desert. There's discussions with transit agencies elsewhere, including the Coachella Valley that have connections there. So that starting point at the San Bernardino Transit Center really opens up a lot of regional connections. Ultimately, the route would travel down Waterman to Barton, connect over Barton, Washington into the Business Corridor, still covering the Barton Business Corridor within the City of Grand Terrace. We do know, and it's clear that that does impact the Senior Center within the City of Grand Terrace. One of the reasons why that was made was OmniTrans, through our Special Transportation Services Department, does have a partnership with the city to provide operational and vehicle funding for the Blue Mountain Silver Liner. We do have a call for projects every year to two years that offers funding for city partnerships or nonprofit partnerships to provide services for those that are senior or disabled. Additionally, within our strategic, within our Special Transportation Services Department, there are many services that we offer for the senior and disabled, including taxi subsidy programs, lift subsidy programs, volunteer driver programs that all offer reimbursements so that we don't leave individuals without transportation options. We would be happy to continue to partner to make sure all of those options are available as changes may occur. Additionally, OmniTrans has worked and will continue to be working with Riverside Transit Agency, who does also provide, does drive through the City of Grand Terrace with closed-door service. We will be working with and have been working with RTA to see if there's a way to us doing to see if there's a way to us to incur some costs so that they will provide fixed route service within the city. That is not something that is a done deal by any means, but it's something we are actively working towards. One of the things we want to look at is some of the numbers as to why. I'll have a couple, just a little bit of information about this. While Omnigo, Grand Terrace does serve a little bit of Colton, does serve a little bit of Low Malinda, the ridership specifically in the city of Grand Terrace is approximately 16 passengers a day. For boardings, 15, alightings a day, people getting off. So in general, there's about 31 individual trips on any given day. We did try to see how we could minimize the impact impacted by the route change. Approximately eight of the 16 boardings on the day are impacted by the map change. So we were able to keep about half of the customers currently covered by that proposed Route 305. There is one person in this proposal that is served by an adjacent stop. So they may have been on Michigan, but now service is on Barton. So there's a slight adjustment, but they would still have bus service very nearby. So 43% of the riders, the 16 riders, would not have fixed route service with this particular change. One of the questions that has come up is, why look at Route 325? And this chart has a lot of information, but fundamentally, this is one of the most important charts that we can look at when looking at transit planning. What it shows is per hour of service, the buses are out there, how many people are boarding. And it starts on the far left with routes that run every 15 minutes. It goes to routes that are running at 20, 30, 60. And then lastly, when you get to the light of orange on the very far right, you get to our Omnigo services. The first Omnigo, first two Omnigos are actually within the city of Ucaipa. The third is Chino Hills. And finally, the lowest bar on the chart is the Omnigo service that serves the city of Grand Terrace. Quite frankly, every one of those orange bars, on the very far right, with the exception of one route within the city of Ucaipa, is proposed for elimination in the service. The one route within the city of Ucaipa sees a significant, almost 80% reduction in service. There's a significant curtailing of weekend, weekday service that leaves that highest-performing Omnigo there. But also, if you look at the next tier, the lowest bar has also proposed for elimination. The next couple routes are also either significantly realigned or proposed for elimination. So we did take a data-driven approach to bring a plan forward. One of the questions that came up at the public meeting last night was, "Well, they're no longer proposing a route that would go straight to the VA. How would someone from Grand Terrace get to the VA?" And here, I look specifically at the VA Hospital rather than the ambulatory clinic just because that's where the route currently goes. So if we look at the star on the map, the star is the location of the VA Hospital. If you board along the Barton Corridor, which is sort of circled in red right now, what you would do is you would take Route 305 and you would have an opportunity to transfer anywhere on Route 19 between Barton and Washington and Barton and Waterman. The place that would be most likely to transfer would be actually at the Stater Brothers Shopping Center, effectively Barton and Washington or Barton and Cooley, where we do have shelters, there are amenities, there are benches, there's better, sort of a better transfer connection at that location. Additionally, what you get is there are other options. You could go farther down Waterman to make connections to other routes that could go to either the ambulatory clinic or connect back to the VA Hospital. One of the things, as I mentioned again, by going into the San Bernardino Transit Center, you get a lot more regional connectivity than you do with the current Route 325. So besides the fixed route changes, which I just described with Omnigo Route 325, whenever we changed our fixed route service, there are corresponding changes to our ADA access service. That service is required within three-quarters of a mile of any fixed route. Currently, within the cities we serve, we do extend that currently to beyond the city boundaries or to the city boundaries beyond that three-quarter buffer. And right now, there are four individuals last year who took a total of 67 trips on access in the city of Grand Terrace that would no longer be eligible for access with that particular change. Now, again, with our Special Transportation Services Department, we have sent letters to each of these individuals, we have reached out to them, we are working with them on the host of partnerships that we have with Lyft, taxis, et cetera, so that they have mobility options. And although we've sent letters, we're still in the process of reaching out to all of them to make sure that they know what their options would be if this plan moves forward. Additionally, when we propose changing the route, since the route no longer travels as far south into the city of Grand Terrace, there are some individuals that are covered by ADA that are because the Omnigo goes there now that would no longer be covered. That was currently seven individuals who took 77 trips a year. Again, they were sent letters, they were given options as well, and we're looking to solicit feedback from them. In terms of our timeline, where we are right now is very much in a public input process, trying to make sure that we understand the needs of the community even more than we have throughout several meetings. The board approved the scale of our service change. So what that means is, in order to be fiscally sustainable, we need to look at a 71,000-hour, 11% or $5 million service reductions, and the board approved our guiding principles. In December, the board called for a public hearing, which were those 22 meetings and several council presentations. During January and February, our staff has been out at those meetings and council presentations, and we've been asking for feedback either in written comment card, via email, social media, et cetera. And that feedback will close on February 13th. When we get that feedback, we will analyze all of the results, present that to our board, and bring a proposal to either refine the plan or move forward depending on the outcome of this public input process. There have been a number of meetings. All of our meetings are available. The schedule is available on omnitrans.org/ConnectForward. We have had several meetings nearby, including the meeting in Grand Terrace last night. We've had several meetings in San Bernardino, Redlands, and Colton. The Colton meeting is still coming up on Tuesday, February 4th, so we can get additional feedback. And then we have a meeting at our OmniTrans Board on February 4th as well. One of the key things that we do at these meetings is we go to the public in many cases, at the busiest bus stops in the communities, so that the public can come to us, so that we can go to the public instead of the public needing to come to us. With that, I know that was a lot of information, but I'd be happy to take any questions.
Alright. Thank you, Mr. Bryant. Just two that I have, and I think my council colleagues probably have some concerns that they would like to ask about. When you're talking about Lyft, would that be subsidized Lyft rides?
So yes. Currently, we have a taxi and Lyft subsidy program that will subsidize up to half the cost of a taxi or Lyft ride for seniors and disabled.
Okay. And then if you are proposing a connection to Route 19, say I board the bus here and I head down to Route 19, how much longer does my ride get to the VA Hospital by doing that?
So at this point in time, we have not developed the detailed schedules to know the transfer time. I think one of the things we heard is that connection is very important. So as we look at scheduling, we can work to schedule that connection to make sure it's as reliable as possible. Route 19 runs every 30 minutes, so the worst case would be a 30-minute transfer. However, based on the feedback, I'm sure we'll bring that well under that.
Further questions? Councilmember... Go ahead. Councilmember Hesse.
Well, thank you for coming out tonight. I was at the meeting last night, and most of the questions, and I agree with you, a lot of the seniors here tonight and veterans. The mayor asked one of my questions, was the additional time that's gonna take. I know we got a lot of numbers up here, a lot of graphs. Did anybody ride that bus? Did you guys put the route together and try it out? And then did you also consider about seniors who have dementia and veterans who have limitations? Because it's very confusing. I mean, for me to catch the bus, I didn't, last night, I was more confused than when I just got on 325. So I want to know if you guys thought that out. And then Route 305, does it go all the way down to Michigan? Do you know? Or does it just go to Mount Vernon?
So on Barton, it goes to Michigan. However, it does not go down Michigan.
So where will you utilize that new bus stop we just put in?
So that bus stop is on... Sorry. So if we go back to the route really quickly, I may have had my... So in terms of the route, the route will certainly use the new bus stop that was put in. Currently, the map shows a slight turnaround that is right before Michigan. Ultimately, one of the things that we couldn't do because the construction is not done yet is utilize the roundabout that's being built as part of the Barton interchange. Our expectation is to continue the route down Barton, use the roundabout to come back, so it would use both sides of Barton, connecting all the way to the 215.
Alright. Now, on Route 325, is that a contracted driver or is it a Teamster?
It is a contracted driver.
So doesn't that save money right there?
It does. We are planning on using a contracted driver with Route 305 as well. So the shift of there does not...
On the... Now, they were told yesterday that they could get the access to Lyft and everything else, but it'd be subsidized, and they're talking about additional $30 out of their pocket. Is that true?
So there are several options on Lyft and taxi rides. There are options to buy $10, $20, $30, $100 Lyft and taxi vouchers, which are subsidized at 50%. It depends on how many trips, how far those trips are. So I can't tell you how much the trip is gonna cost. All I can show is that we would cover 50% of the cost.
So that's additional cost to our seniors that are gonna be taking the alternate route if they can't make it to the bus stop for 305?
So I think one of the things we would still look at is the area at the Senior Center, which is, I think, where most of the comments came from, would still be covered by our access service. So if they were a senior disabled that was eligible for ADA service, they would still be eligible for access service. It would still cover that area. And that service currently costs $375 to take a one-way trip, assuming you're going within, not going past Fontana, which currently 325 doesn't do.
So that access service will take them right to the VA?
So assuming they're ADA-eligible, which means that they have, they've gone through an eligibility process, there is a documentable disability. Access would be able to take them from the Senior Center directly to the VA Hospital. It would cost them $375. The difference between 325 and access service is you would need to call at least a day in advance to make that reservation.
Can you make that instead of disabled, something for seniors?
So we cannot make it something for seniors. It's something that's required by the federal government. The regulations specifically are for those that are disabled. Many of the individuals that you talked about in some of the circumstances did specifically relate to individuals with disabilities. If we want to look at seniors and making that senior trip more accessible, one of the options is back to the Special Transportation Services Department with the Blue Mountain Silver Liner. We do have a partnership program. We do have a call for projects that occurs. I believe we were planning on having one in the summer. We also have a partnership now that we, in theory, could amend, that could allow for additional services. Again, that is a partnership between OmniTrans and the city that we could certainly explore, which then would be able to allow for seniors because it's a different funding pool to provide that service.
You say you're gonna be an $11 million shortfall?
No, we have an 11% reduction. It's a $5 million reduction in costs.
And they expect more shortfalls later or reductions?
So what we did now is we took a larger reduction now to close a funding deficit through 2040. On the operating side, we do have a balanced, with these proposed changes and some funding changes proposed at SBCTA, we would have a balanced operating plan. So what we would plan to do is then look to see how the routes perform and adjust from there. However, we would not have additional planned service reductions beyond that.
So on the reductions, is this eliminating routes, not taking away staff's jobs?
Yes. I mean, if we're looking at drivers, there's approximately a 50-driver reduction in this program that we think we can handle through attrition. There are other reductions tied to administrative staff and beyond.
Alright, sir. Well, the only thing I have to say is, you know, I filled out a comment card and a lot of other people talked about, I would just like to have you guys reconsider eliminating 325.
Thank you for your feedback.
Thank you.
Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Mr. Bryant and Ms. Rogers, for being here. I also was at the meeting last night, and one of the comments that was brought forward by one of the other attendees, I believe it was Dennis Kidd. He spoke about how the high school kids from Grand Terrace High School use 325 from the after-school programs to connect on Michigan Avenue for their routes home. You know, band, sports, tutoring, all those after-school activities. And there's apparently, I don't know, this is just one of the comments that was brought forward last night, that there is a ridership on that side other than the seniors. So, I mean, they may not be here to comment on their need, but there is that. And the second thing I wanted to ask you about is, although you actually brought it up just before the mayor asked me or opened my comments about the partnership for the Silver Liner. So if I understand it right, what are the options there? Would we be able to get enhanced funding for enhanced services to offer the Silver Liner more trips more often? Is that an option that could be brought forward?
Likely. So moving forward at our upcoming, at our March Board meeting, they're still going through committees upcoming, we will be bringing new proposals, a new set of guidelines for that funding source. Currently, we had a call for projects last summer that left just several hundred thousand dollars on the table that cities and nonprofit partners did not apply for. So yes, if the city has a desire to increase that service, there is funding available. There is a grant process. The previous funding did not get fully utilized, so...
For shame. For shame. Okay, because we're getting a new bus that's all electric, but we aren't getting all the money for it, but we could use some help with that. The other point I wanted to ask you about is, if I just want to understand this, you want to drop 325 because, or this, it's only like a half a mile from Barton to the Senior Center and back to Barton. I mean, that little short distance would allow the seniors who have difficulty ambulating to get on the bus there, rather than to try to figure out a way to get over to 305's pickup point and connect to 19. You know what I'm saying? It just doesn't, to me, that little short distance, I just don't understand how that little tiny piece of distance can have that big an impact on your budget.
So I think one of the proposals we could certainly partake in is a proposal to not continue past Mount Vernon, turn north onto Mount Vernon to serve the Senior Center. The challenge to that would be, there would be a change in the frequency of the route. It is a little bit farther. Currently, as the Route 305 is designed, it's designed as a one-bus service, very much like 325, that can come every 60 minutes. If we extend that extra mile, the bus isn't coming every 60 minutes, it's coming every, we figure that out, probably 70, 75 to be able to go up into the Senior Center. Again, that's something that, if there's a refined comment, we can certainly evaluate.
Okay. But with the enhanced services from the Silver Liner, then it might be possible for the Silver Liner to bring seniors to Barton Road and connect there and drop them off at the bus stop in time?
That was our expectation. What we saw was, once the Silver Liner began, the ridership on Route 325 at the Senior Center dropped considerably. Right now, we're seeing between six and eight boardings a day at the Senior Center. So it's relative to our system, where we're getting 35,000 to 40,000 boardings a day, a relatively, while important, relatively small number. Since it did have the Silver Liner as a service option, we also thought it was important to serve the Business Corridor. We've heard lots of requests over the years to ensure that we serve the New Stater Brothers employees going to the Business Developments on Barton. And that was sort of the trade-off that we looked at, but it is a trade-off. We can serve sort of the Business Corridor, we can serve somewhere else, but it's where are the options, where are the duplications? Since there was a duplication with the Silver Liner, it made sense to sort of spread the resources effectively.
So I just want to put the word out to anybody who's listening that there are also, if you're a veteran, and that seems to be the subject that keeps getting brought up, the VA also offers some transportation services and options. You have to check over there. If you get your care there, like I do, then you can go to the Transportation Office and you can find out those options that might be available for you there. But thank you so much, Jeremiah, for your information.
Thank you.
Councilmember Robles?
Thank you. I've served on OmniTrans most recently for four years. So global, the framing of the issue is ridership is down for buses all over. Revenues are down, so there's gonna have to be cuts somewhere. We understand that. But how to keep service going? Now, I was gonna bring up about the Lyft and Uber subsidy. It's just Lyft, right? Lyft?
It's Lyft and Taxi.
Okay, Lyft and Taxi. So now, just because you're a senior, which I'm a senior, doesn't mean that you can't afford 50% of the Lyft. So we need to bring it down to seniors who cannot afford to pay half the subsidy. Now, this is my second year on Medicare and there's been some substantial changes to Medicare where now they're paying for, depending on which plan you pick. I pick scan, there is transportation to and from appointments now. Maybe we can try to figure out with all the puzzle pieces of the changing landscape, how we can get the word out that with your supplemental, you can choose a supplemental plan that has door-to-door service. Obviously, I think our senior liner has to be part of the service thing. What seems like a disconnect for me, listening to serving the employment corridor, is that what we found out the reason ridership is down is because people who can afford a car that work will not take public transportation. So if we can look a little bit more closer on, you said the trade-off there, if there's really a trade-off. And then I saw in some LA Times is that, you know, schools over and over again have defunded their transportation system. So LA is looking at using the bus system to better serve student population. So I think that's something that we really need to look at because the UCLA study showed that people who work need to have a better system than once every hour, so that they're leaving the transit system. And then we have an issue where I learned personally with a grandson-in-law that had a job in Fontana, it would take him three to four hours to get from Colton to Fontana because the bus is oriented to go to the MetroLink, you know, and to these transit centers, which is, we've got to stop. I mean, we really, at some point, also have to face, we've got to make cuts. There has to be consolidations. People still need to get served. But, you know, I think some of our policymakers, you know, are really into this MetroLink and now we have transportation to Ontario Airport. And my feeling is, we need to stop trying to force people on MetroLink at the expense of people that just simply have no transportation at all. And maybe we can look at, for Grand Terrace, how we accommodate, you know, seniors who have cognitive or physical issues to go to their doctors. And I don't think this is going to be, if we do it right, you know, this won't be the service disruption we think it will be. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
I wanted to redirect you to a question Councilmember Allen had about high school and the ridership there. Do you have a visual on what the ridership is from the high school?
I did not bring the ridership from the high school. I did look at it. It was not significant. The last I understood, the school district still had yellow bus service, if I recall correctly. And I believe it was one of the few school districts in our service area that maintained yellow bus service. So I think that's why we haven't seen the extended use of ridership at the high school.
Okay. And then I noticed in trying to help somebody navigate our bus system that the signs at the bus stops do not connect you to information about when the next bus is coming. The response back is that it doesn't have that information. And the phone doesn't go to somebody that answers and the website gives the same information that the text does. Is there an opportunity to update those signs, especially if there's a change in route? Is there an opportunity to make sure that we have appropriate information for those that want to ride?
We absolutely need to check on that. I heard of that concern and I have not had the time yet to dig into what happened at that particular instance. In many cases, I know that system works. Does it have glitches? Obviously. So we need to, one, either refine that to make sure it works or figure out what the appropriate change is to make it more effective. As I think you know, we did adopt the Transit app as our official app and we need to find a way to make sure that information is more readily available because when the system that you were talking about fails, or if it fails, the Transit app replaces the real-time information with schedule, so you're still getting something.
Okay. Councilmember Hesse?
Thank you, Mayor. One thing that I forgot, and I just saw this young man here. He was concerned because he has to catch the bus to work. And that was on your information on how many riders you have. There was numerous complaints that the machine isn't working on the bus. They're not getting a good head count on the bus, scanners, I guess they call it, or something. But that was one of the numerous complaints. And I don't know if you guys looked into that issue. And then they were saying that they did a facial scan by somebody on light duty counting people on the bus. I mean, what's the deal with that?
So we collect ridership data through many ways. We collect ridership data through our fare box, which is where you pay when you board the bus. On the contracted vehicles, there are occasionally instances where the fare boxes go down. We do know what our average daily ridership is, so the data here represents the approximation for those days. We additionally, and where a lot of the data, especially at the stop level, comes from, comes from surveys that we have to do and submit to the FTA, the Federal Transit Administration, which are counts of individuals by people, basically with a sheet, that go around and find out how many people are boarding, where they're boarding and where they're alighting at. I think one of the things that's key in the data in this chart is even with those changes, with those additional data points that are there, if we look at the services that we are proposing for reductions, the ridership in the city of Grand Terrace would have to be four, five, maybe even more X higher than it is now to not be in line for some level of change. So I don't believe the error is anywhere in the realm of a 4X, 5X error.
All right, thank you.
Those are all the question opportunities I have at this point. I would like to give the public an opportunity to speak. If there was somebody that wished to speak on this item, do we have any requests to speak? This way, if somebody wasn't able to make the meeting last time, they have an opportunity to give their input. I have a request by Cynthia Shaddocks?
Yes. Hi, good evening, Mayor. Good evening, councilmembers. I just wanted to say that as manager of the senior villas over there, we really appreciate the Silver Liner. But the 325, I really feel, has enhanced the quality of life for our veterans, our seniors, our disabled individuals that can't make all those transfers, that are all on a fixed income, that Uber drivers, I think, or Lyft maybe are now able to set their own rates. So I'm not sure that the subsidy, how long that would last somebody. It was my understanding yesterday that they could purchase like $30 up to $75, where they would get like $60 worth of transfer or ride ability. Not all of our seniors can afford that. And I know that we have like the food bank over at the church. I have many of my members that come over there and use that opportunity to help get them through the month. So I know yesterday they talked about the special projects for the Silver Liner bus. I don't know if there's anything that we can do to enhance some of the services that they give, maybe to go to the Senior Center. Some of my people cannot travel that far. They can't make those two or three transfers. It's hard for them to walk. So I just really believe that it would be detrimental to the quality of life that they have over there if we cannot provide either extended services for the Silver Liner or if we could keep the 325 maybe at a lesser frequency, something that would also benefit OmniTrans, but would still be able to benefit the seniors at the Senior Center and at my apartment complex.
Thank you, Ms. Shaddocks. I appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
And I see note being taken by our OmniTrans representatives, so.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other requests to speak at this time?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay. If there are any last words that you had, Mr. Bryant?
Again, I would just like to echo the thank you for the opportunity to present. I appreciate the feedback we received last night. I appreciate the feedback we received today. All of that is crucial to developing a refined plan. I do believe one of the comments that has come up regularly, or two of the comments that have come up regularly relate to, is there additional funding opportunities and additional partnership opportunities related to the services and partnerships between OmniTrans and the city of Grand Terrace? To that, I can officially and unequivocally say yes. It's just a matter of us spending the time together to make sure that the partnerships are there. There is funding available. And we, again, as I think, as Councilmember Allen said, it was a shame that some of the funding from the last call went unused. I think the other thing that's come up many times is seniors that are unable to walk to a new bus stop or seniors are unable to make a transfer, seniors that have a cognitive disability that wouldn't allow them to be able to connect to their additional service, or the new proposed service. Those are the eligibility requirements for ADA service. If you're unable to make it to your bus stop and you have a disability of some form that prevents that, that is effectively the test for whether or not you're eligible for access. If you meet that test for access, then you would still be able to have direct service from the Senior Center to the VA hospital, either the hospital or the ambulatory clinic, at a cost of approximately $375. With that, thank you.
Thank you very much for being here tonight. I appreciate your report. And thank you, Ms. Rogers. And I look forward to seeing some of the proposed encompassing of these comments that you put into your plan. Thank you very much. All right, we'll move on to our next item on the agenda, which is, I have somebody asking to speak. Councilmember Allen, did you have more to say?
I only wanted to mention to anybody who's listening and still wants to have a comment, or there's an OmniTrans board meeting February 5 at the OmniTrans headquarters. You can also have a public comment time there. And you can come and speak your mind and your position there also. So hopefully, we'll see you there.
Thank you. All right. Do we have any items for reordering or additions or removal of items from the agenda, Mr. City Manager?
We do not, Mayor.
So we'll move to the consent calendar. Consent calendar items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by one time at the city council without discussion. Any council member, staff member, or citizen may request removal of an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Are there any requests for removal of items at this time? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Yeah, and second.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tem Wilson, second by Councilmember Allen. Please vote.
Motion passes with Councilmembers Allen and Hesse voting yes, Mayor Pro Tem Wilson voting yes, Mayor McNamee votes yes, Councilmember Robles abstains.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to public comment. This is the opportunity for members of the public to comment on items not appearing on the regular agenda. Because of restrictions contained in California law, city council may not discuss or act on any item not on the agenda, may briefly respond to statements made or ask a question for clarification. Also, items may be requested to come back at a later date on a future meeting agenda. Are there requests for public comment at this time? Thank you. First request to speak is from Jeffrey McConnell.
Jeffrey McConnell, and I am done. You know, this started with my CUP and the abuse and lies from Sandra Malina. And I came back and asked for a reconsideration and all I got was a citation. Okay, because I have the proof that she basically lied and misled the planning commission. So on the citation, I had the right to appeal the citation because I was working with some of the department heads until suddenly the attitude changed and now I've got a ticket. So I followed the instructions on the back of the ticket for an appeal and it says, "By submitting a written request for a hearing and returning it to the issuing department as noted on the citation within 15 days," which I did. So I came in, talked to Mr. Ferguson Chaz, who mysteriously no longer works here right here. And he looked at it, okay, sent me an email. So I sent him an email, copied Steve and Code Enforcement. And so I'm waiting for an appeal, so I can discuss this in detail with all the evidence I have. The response I got, another ticket. So I got ignored, even though I filed, Mr. City Attorney, I filed the instructions on the back of your ticket, the city's ticket. Okay, so that's, I'm done with this. You know, I've been abused and I can see why the employers and called the employees called the Teamsters because they're tired of being abused and misrepresented. So I'm calling out, you know, a culture of corruption. For 20 years, I've watched here this culture of corrupt, unethical behavior, and sometimes illegal conduct, starting with Gary Coons, Steve Berry, Betsy Adams, Sandra Malina, and now Harold Duffy. So I'm done. I'm going to the Public Integrity Unit with the district attorney and filing ethics complaints with them and anything else I can do. And I'm also contacting all the newspapers that have already been contacted and of course, Mr. Duffy's favorite, TrueUrbanGirls.com from Compton. So what Gary Coons do, this was back in 2005 or '06. Okay, this, the address is 21600 Walnut Avenue, where the owner was going through a CUP, too much financial duress because of the conditions. So I got an escrow with a local builder. We're going to build a nice, like Michigan industrial complex over there. Gary Coons had a private meeting with me and him and he says, "No, you're going to have to do all the improvements, including pave all the way and widen the street all the way to Barton Road." Of course, it scared the developer. He ran out the door. And suddenly, a few months later, because I live two doors away, it's just like, here comes CLS landscaping. No CUP, you know, I have been telling you, I go to all the meetings for 19 years now, and council meetings too. No CUP, no permits, no nothing. I copied all of this, gave it to Sandra, November, October, no response. No permits, no CUP. He's got 50 sheep down there. Why doesn't he? I don't, he doesn't get a ticket. I get a ticket for a mulch pile. It's ridiculous. So I have no choice but to be the whistleblower. I'm the whistleblower. So if you want to punish me, I've been punished enough. So I'm being forced to go to the DA and Ethics Committee, Public Integrity Unit. So if you want to silence me, go ahead. I'm used to the abuse. I've got tickets. I'm tired of it. I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. McConnell. Our next request to speak is from Johann Gallo.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I just wanted to follow up on the work that we did last year with Assemblymember Reyes on the grant for the additional stuff for the citizens, excuse me, Neighborhood Watch Program, the additional cameras and all the work that Lieutenant Wolf and I did to put everything together for the grant. So I'm just hoping we're in a new legislative year and that, I'm hoping that the proposal that the city sent to Assemblymember Reyes continues to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gallo. Mr. Duffy, will you follow up with Mr. Gallo on that issue?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, we'll close public comment at this time and we'll bring it back to council for their communications. Councilmember Jeff Allen?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to mention, sort of related to what Mr. Gallo brought up, the Neighborhood Watch Program. And I would like to mention also, in addition to the Neighborhood Watch Program, I'm a big promoter of our Citizens on Patrol Program. And I think the Citizens on Patrol Program is a great program for our community if you're looking for an opportunity to get involved and learn from the Sheriff's Department and have some fun. And hey, Mr. Gallo, you know, they could use some inspiration. I'm looking at you. So enough on that. And, you know, at the last council meeting, Councilmember Isaac Souchel from the city of Colton came and addressed us about some concerns that he has with some streets over in his neck of the woods, which is the area west of Lockadina. A lot of residents in our city don't know that Grand Terrace has an area west of Lockadina Drive that has several residences up in there on Rosedale Avenue, Litten, Palm, Seville, that area, Bostic. And so I took a drive over there and I agree, we can do better. Lockadina Drive, there's a section of Lockadina Drive that belongs to Grand Terrace. We can stripe that. We need to stripe that. It has some holes. We need to fill those holes. That's a major thoroughfare. It has some heavy truck traffic on it. And I can understand the concerns that people have with Lockadina Drive and the area, the section that we own. So I'd like to see us pay attention to that. The other streets I drove on, they too, like several other streets in our city, are in need of some attention. Now, AJ, can you bring that part of the website up, please? I just, I talked to Councilmember Souchel and I wanted to make sure that anybody who's watching or listening knows that they can find out. find out from the city's website where their street is on the schedule, and what's scheduled to be done to repair it or resurface it, and that sort of thing. And I think, yeah, we're going to pull up this map and show you that they're color-coded. I don't think we need to talk very much about it, but you can go to the website, look at the map. You can, there's also a search bar where you can type in your street. It will give you a status on that, but just knowing the color coding and where your street is, then you'll know where you are in our capital improvement plan to get the streets resurfaced, because that's important for residents, and I can, I can relate to that. I mean, and bad weather, the wintertime weather that plays havoc with our roads, especially when the heavy trucks are on it. Now, Councilmember Souchel and I, in our meetings, we've met several times now since he came to our last meeting, and I can't thank him enough for coming here and bringing this to our attention. And I just want all the residents that live west of the 215, and especially west of Lockadina Drive, to understand and know that you're not forgotten. We know you're there, and we are interested in making sure that you receive all the services that everyone else receives. You're, we're all part of this wonderful little town. Some of the things that Councilmember Souchel and I discussed were the ongoing projects coming to that area, that border between Grand Terrace and Colton. How many of you are aware of that? That entire industrial park, warehouses and everything that belonged to Colton are going to be demolished, and two enormous warehouses are going to be built east of Lockadina Drive between the city boundary and Lockadina Drive, including that old Stater Brothers warehouse that Stater Brothers used to occupy. I mean, there's some concerns over truck traffic because of that, and if you have concerns and you live in that area, then I would suggest that you become active in maybe voicing your opinion on those projects. So one of the things that I also talked with Mr. Souchel about were some issues of concern to us that Colton can do something about, like, I know Councilmember Hesse brought up one time, the signs on Mount Vernon, the lack of signage on Mount Vernon Slope to prevent heavy truck traffic from coming up that hill. And so the council member talked to the city manager and assured me that that situation would be remedied soon. So I think that this collaboration between two council members from neighboring cities, I'm going to continue to meet periodically and learn about things going on in that area, and bring them to your attention so that you know how to react to them, if you want to. I also want to reemphasize that about the OmniTrans board meeting on February 5. I'll be attending that as, on the board, and so anybody who wants to come and voice their opinion, I'll make sure you get the opportunity to do that. And for right now, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Allen. Councilmember Bill Hesse.
Thank you, Mayor. This is kind of a plug for our Girl Scouts. I know everybody does a New Year's resolution about losing weight, then along comes the Girl Scouts selling cookies. So a couple things. You can still buy the cookies and donate them back to the Girl Scouts, and they'll give them to our armed forces overseas and our first responders, and they do a great donation when we have our Veterans Freedom Park there. So it's a good way to help support, you know, our men and women in service and our men and women on the front line right now. So Girl Scout cookies are in full force. Oh, and the Thin Mints are the best ones. That's my short plug. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Hesse. Councilmember Sylvia Robles.
Thank you, Mayor. Last Thursday, the 23rd, I attended the League of Cities Revenue and Taxation Policy Committee that I serve on. It was a very substantial meeting. I think the League of Cities this year is going to aggressively look at the pension unfunded liabilities. We were addressed by the Cal Per CEO, Marcy Frost, and there was a presentation on the different buckets of money that fund, you know, the employer contribution, the employee contribution, stock market, and that kind of thing. So they're going to come to April to the policy committee and have some in-depth proposals for, to be reviewed. The other issues were Opportunities Zones with the Governor's Office of Business and Economic Development. Apparently, the director, a senior business development specialist, and these are pretty substantial people. They're lawyers, people with accounting degrees, and there's some tax benefit at the federal level through the Trump administration that were passed that would be beneficial to cities. So it would be low-income census tracts, and it was to spur development of private investment, and for that they get some credits. And I know that our city manager was working on some, some issues also with them, but this is a new thing, and they're saying this is an additional to what's already occurred, and they're encouraging that you layer all the different opportunities and come to them with proposals. The other issues were the implementation of the Wayfair decision. That was how, with e-commerce now, how we share sales taxes. Is it at the point of sale? Is it where the warehouse is? And there was considerable work on that, and there's some, one issue to really be dealt with is right now the money is going to the county pool instead of to the cities where the funds were generated by the consumer. We had the Director of what used to be the Board of Vehicleization, California Department of Tax and Fee Administration, and he brought some staff, and the discussion was about the cannabis industry, and that we are in a crisis now because there was so much taxes put on the product at different stages, that now illegal cannabis is more available, and consumers are going to the illegal black market and buying their product there. So they're going to come back and, and have some dis proposals about how to deal with that issue. The final issue was the vehicle license fees, and that just applies to new cities. That, how funding is shared was changed, and some new cities became, like Eastville became cities depending on that revenue, and then it was gone. So those are the highlights of that meeting, and that's all I have to report, because I was sick the last meeting, and I'm sure you reported on the SCAG briefing. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Robles. Mayor Pro Tem Doug Wilson.
Mayor McNamee, with all due respect to Councilman Allen, I am really happy that we have a great proactive staff, because we're about five years into, or about two years into a five-year road maintenance plan. And if you look at the cost for keeping our $16 million worth of roads in decent shape, you find that there's about a $6 million tab that we've been working our way down on, which means, at least the way I understand it, when you get to, go to the store and you got no money, you don't buy nothing. And in this case, we have just enough to be able to take care of some of the minimal things. After that, once we formulated that plan, I went to the Assemblymember, Assemblymember's office, and asked her how the state was going to channel money back to the localities, because our regional money is pretty well set, so far as freeways and so on. But all that hap, all that happens with that is, is that we can get from point A to point U, and then point U to point Z is in our streets, and our streets are literally falling apart, and we're trying our best to keep it from do that, doing that. So with that, two years into a five-year plan, and the $6 million, next time the City of Colton representative decides that it's important for him to make a call on our streets, I think it would be proper for him to follow the proper procedure. We have a Public Works Department. There was really no cause for him to show up at a public meeting and, and do that. I think it's a lot better when we, you know, follow the proper courtesy between jurisdictions, and then just, you know, make himself, make himself aware, and then we can make ourselves aware to him that we have a plan, that we have started, and we are working on it. So with that information, I think, I think we've got it handled. The little bit of striping that they're talking about costs 10 cents a foot to do, and if they would have done us the courtesy of taking care of maybe a couple hundred feet worth of striping, and we would have gone ahead and probably paid the bill. But that's not what they chose to do, so we will, I'm sure, the Public Works Department has a great handle on it, and it is already scheduled to be done.
Thank you, Councilmember.
That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I am in the position of really not having much of a report. SBCTA has canceled their, their committee meetings, and I won't even have a February board meeting, so that's kind of a nice break. And my friends from OmniTrans came and gave the real important update for OmniTrans, so that is wonderful. I will just say that as a, as a board member of SBCTA, I did travel with SBCTA staff to Sacramento to speak to a legislator who, just today, unfortunately, has introduced some legislation that would create an additional transportation authority that would focus solely on train transportation between Burbank Airport and Ontario Airport. And so we were prevailing upon him to work through SBCTA and actually serve the residents of San Bernardino instead of looking at just the very west end. And so more discussion to come on that. And that will be my report. So we will move forward with the rest of our agenda, and we have unfinished business, item G, which is second reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter 18.06, which is definitions, and Chapter 18.40, which is M2 Industrial District of the zoning code pertaining to contractor offices and storage yards. Mr. Stephen Weiss, Planning and Development Services Director.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. This is, as you said, this is the second reading of this ordinance, and there, there have been no changes made of the proposed ordinance since its introduction, which was on the 14th of January. So our recommendation is to make a decision and approve the second reading.
Okay. Are there requests to speak on this item? Thank you. Bobby Forbes. There she is.
Trying to sit back. Thank you. I'd just like to clarify that this is the areas west of the freeway down by the riverbed?
Actually, this is an ordinance. Will you describe the ordinance, that it's not project-specific?
That's correct. It's one of five, five industrial areas in the city, not just that one area, but there's a number of them.
So it's not specific to the 23 acres that's down at the bottom?
That's correct.
Not specific. So I'm not sure that I have the right information to speak, but I'm against what they want to do with the trucking outfit on the 23 acres. I don't know about the other part, because our neighborhood can't handle the trucks, and it's my understanding that Patrick that owns the property west of Lockadina has sold that property. He was building a trucking company there, and he has sold that, so he's liable to do that with the 23 acres. That's just my thought. He's a businessman, and he doesn't care about the neighborhood. He's just caring, he's there for the dollar. So I don't know if I'm speaking in the right content or not, but that's my nickel's worth. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Forbes. Any other requests to speak on this?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right. I'll close public comment and bring it back to our Public Services Director to focus on what it is that we are, we are voting on tonight.
You're, you're voting to further approve the second reading of the ordinance for, for heavy manufacturing, for contractor storage yards, and to provide clarification within the zoning code, Section 18.4 of the zoning ordinance. And it's my understanding that the city attorney reads the ordinance into the record.
Right. And so this does not pertain to any project that would be before Planning Commissioner or anybody else?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So we'll bring it back to council for what they'd like to do. I have city attorney, you would like to speak?
Yes, briefly, just to clarify. This pertains to contractor storage yards, and specifically outdoor ones. If and when a project that involved a contractor office or storage yard outdoor, it would require a conditional use permit, which would go before the Planning Commission and could be appealed to the City Council. So that would be this project-specific issue that you raised, Ms. Forbes. But right now, all this is doing is amending the zoning code to allow for that in the future, if somebody wished to apply. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Allen?
I was going to move the recommendation, Mayor.
All right. Motion by Councilmember Allen. Is there a second? Okay. Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Would you please read the ordinance?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor.
By title?
Thank you. The title of the ordinance is as follows, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Grand Terrace, California, finding that zoning code amendment 19-02 is exempt from review pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act Guidelines, Section 15061B3, and amending Chapter 18.06 definitions and Chapter 18.40, M2 Industrial District of Title 18 zoning of the Grand Terrace Municipal Code."
Thank you. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Allen, Hesse, and Robles voting yes, Mayor Pro Tem Wilson voting yes, and Mayor McNamee voting yes.
Thank you. We'll move to item H, which is new business. Number five on our agenda, but first in new business is to establish an ad hoc committee to select a local veteran to be honored at the Miller Park Amphitheater Veterans Memorial in the City of Fontana. Mr. City Attorney, or, excuse me, Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. For the record, G. Harold Duffy, City Manager. On April, on January 13, 2020, the mayor received a letter from Mayor Aquaneta Warren from Fontana, requesting that the city nominate a veteran to be, to be at the Miller Amphitheater Veterans Memorial on, to be honored on April 18, 2020. And so the, actually, we have a very short timeline on this, but they were asking for a nomination by January 30, 2020. So the mayor has requested that we establish an ad hoc committee to select a local veteran to be honored at the Miller Park Amphitheater Veterans Memorial in the City of Fontana. And so staff is bringing the item forward to the council to see if you would like to establish an ad hoc committee.
All right. I would like to nominate our two veterans, Councilmember Hesse and Councilmember Allen, to this ad hoc committee. Councilmember Allen, did you have a comment?
No, Mayor. I think I pushed it by accident.
I'll second the motion.
All right. Are there any requests to speak at this time?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right. So motion is for Councilmembers Hesse and Allen to be ad hoc committee, and second by Councilmember Robles. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Allen, Hesse, and Robles voting yes, Mayor Pro Tem Wilson voting yes, and Mayor McNamee voting yes.
All right. Thank you. We'll move to item number six, which is our monthly financial report for November 2019. Ms. Cynthia Fortune, who will be speaking to us from the well tonight.
And actually, Mayor, I'm going to start that, this process. Before we start, I just want to make very clear on that last particular item, the ad hoc committee, they will be making a recommendations and then submitted to me, so I can turn it over to the City of Fontana, and then the report back to the council on who they selected.
And will they have a story to go with it?
We can come up with one.
Not, not to be directing, but I think that, as you mentioned, the Girl Scouts, they are very supportive of seniors. They might be able to give you some ideas of people that they've talked to and done research, just because it's a short turnaround, and that's just one point of, of research for you.
Okay.
Mr. City Attorney?
That was for the last item. I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. My, my lights keep popping up. Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. City Manager?
Yes. So what we, the council has before them is the receiving file for the November 2019 monthly financial report. But before we started that process, I just wanted to remind or just refresh the councils in terms of where we were and where we are today in terms of the budget. This is a report that we, that we presented to the council over the last four years that shows the, the health of a city budget. And if you look, and you'll see the chart on the side, that you'll see an unsustainable or insolvent budget. And what that is, that's, that's when the revenues are less than the expenditures. And then if it's a vulnerable budget, that means that the revenues exceed expectations, but there, there's less than 200,000. but there, there's less than two months' reserve for a rainy day fund. And then a sustainable, uh, budget is revenues exceed expenditures, and you can, you have that two months' worth of rainy day fund. And then the healthy budget was we have the revenues exceed expenditures, it continues to, to show growth year over year, and the city maintains a two-month reserve rainy day fund. And so as you'll see by looking at this particular chart, um, where we were back in 2011 and where we are today is dramatically different. And one of the things that is also important is to understand, is that sometimes when governments have, um, a budget where they have a balanced budget, but they, somehow they, they can't afford to deliver the services that the residents want, we call that service insolvency. Even though you have a balanced budget, uh, you, you're not meeting the, the overall demands or the basic demands of the residents. And so where we are right now is a sustainable budget, where we have climbed up to about $5.9 million, and we are, in terms of expenses and revenue. And then we also are maintaining that two mu-, two months' worth of rainy day fund. And so with that, Ms. Fortune will give you an update on where we are right now based on the November's report.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem, City Council. Staff report in front of you is the November 2019 monthly financial support, report. This staff report supports city goal number one, ensuring our fiscal viability through the continuous monitoring of our actual revenues and expenditures against budget appropriations. So just to provide an overview, for the five-month period ending November 30th, uh, that should have been 2019, I apologize. Um, year-to-date, we've received about $923,000 in revenues for the general fund. What we were expecting is about 926, so we're a little under $3,000 short of what is expected in a five-month period. But that can, that can be just to when the actual receipts were recorded, because it is minimal in nature. So now, when we look at our expenditures, um, again, we were expecting to spend in a five-month period about 2.2 million. We spent almost 20,000 over that, and, um, our biggest reason for that is we lost a longtime employee, which we had a huge leave payout for her when she left. Um, however, due to a couple of vacancies we currently have, we expect that we will be able to cover that deficit. So again, based on, on this, um, we are 22 in the whole ass of November, but our savings for a couple of vacancies should be able to cover that towards the end of the year. This concludes my report. I will be happy to answer any questions City Council may have.
Thank you, Ms. Fortune. Councilmember Hussey.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Fortune, the longtime city employee and $20,000 that, when that person left, do we have a cap on that? Like, if somebody leaves, you know, because when I worked for the federal government, you only allowed so many hours to accumulate and use or lose.
Um, yes. So she, um, was paid all of her vacation time and 40% of her sick time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't see any further questions, so are there any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Then I'll bring it back to, um, motion for receive and file.
I'll second. Did you, did you make a motion? I'll second.
Okay. Please vote.
Motion passes with Councilmembers Allen and Hussey voting yes, Mayor Protem Wilson voting yes, and Mayor McNabb voting yes.
Thank you. So we'll move to item seven, which is the Treasurer's Report for September 30th, 2019. It says previously submitted on December 10th, 2019. And is that Assistant City Manager Fortune?
Thank you, Mayor. So before you, again, is the Treasurer's Report, um, as of September 30th, first quarter of the 2019-20 fiscal year. Uh, as in the previous financial report, this supports, uh, the City Council goal of monitoring our actual revenues and expenditures against budget appropriations, and it is staff that monitors this and reports any variances to our City Council. So the purpose of the report is to provide the city and successor agency with their current cash position as of a certain date and time, and that, and again, a, as of the first quarter in 2019-20, identify where the cash is held, and show that we have sufficient cash resources to make economic commitments for the next six months. So our cash investment report shows that the city has, as of September 30th, 9.6 million in cash. The successor agency has 17.3 million, giving us a total cash of 26.9 million. But City Council is aware, because we did defees our bonds, when we come back for our December report, the successor agency will no longer have that cash. So the, uh, as I mentioned, the Treasurer's Report, uh, does provide the cash as of the month end, September 30th. Any increases or decreases as compared to the prior quarters or to the same quarter in the previous year reflect differences in the timing of receipts of certain revenues. So to check to see if, um, the city is fiscally stable, uh, not including successor agency, our total pooled cash is 9.6 million. Our 1920 adopted budget is 12.9, again, less successor agency. The budget that we're looking at is 8.7. So the requirement is to have at least six months' worth of cash to cover for any economic developments that occur, and that would be to have at least 4.4 million in cash. We have 9.6. We actually have sufficient cash to cover operating expenditures for a 12-month period. That concludes my Treasurer's Report. I will be happy to answer any questions City Council may have.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, you had comment?
I'm sorry, Mayor, that, that was from the previous one, but actually, I do want to make one quick statement. And so what Ms. Fortune has just shown, um, the council, is that in addition to the, uh, rainy day fund that you have available, you also have this cash pool in case something really significant happened. And so where you have the rainy day fund, which is two months' worth of your operating cost, and you have that as part of your basic general fund budget. But if something else significantly happened, where you, where you were not getting your revenues, uh, in, in a timely manner, you could use that cash to, to supplement your operations, as you said, up to a six-month period. So we're referencing this just to, uh, clearly identify to the council and to the public on that the position that the city is in financially, in terms of the, the health of the city.
Okay. Thank you. Are there questions? Any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right. Thank you. I'll bring it back, and, um, I'll make a motion to receive and file.
Second.
Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Councilmembers Allen, Hussey, and Robles voting yes, Mayor Protem Wilson voting yes, and Mayor McNabb voting yes.
Thank you. We'll move to item eight, which is review and consideration of changes to city policy on fiscal reserves, which is the policy number 3.06. Cynthia Fortune, Assistant City Manager.
Good evening again, Mayor. Mayor Protem, City Council. Staff report before you is the fiscal reserve policy. On February 12th, the city approved a process which adds Section 8 to, uh, council agendas entitled Future Agenda Items. On November 12th, 2019, Councilmember Robles requested that the City Council be provided with more detailed information regarding the city's current fiscal reserve, and asked for a brief council discussion. Again, uh, the vision statement is to continuously monitor our actual revenues and expenditures against our budget appropriations. So the city's fiscal reserve policy was established to ensure that the city maintained cash balances to prefer, preserve our creditworthiness. Uh, we established a contingency account that will be budgeted each year in non-departmental, uh, that cost center to provide for unanticipated expenditures during the fiscal year. And a general, a general fund reserve will be established and maintained at the level recommended by the Government Finance Officers Association. And the reporting of fund balances shall be in accordance with the Government Accounting Standards Board. Uh, the, these are all the, um, other agencies that have jurisdiction over our financial reporting. And based on that, based on the recommended, um, guidelines by the government, Government Finance Officers Association, the city shall maintain a general fund contingency reserve of two months, equal to two months of operating revenues. So based on that, um, our 2019-20 budget, uh, is approximately 5.8 million. So the general fund, general fund currently has two months of operating reserves to the amount of six, 981,000. What we chose to do was to provide a table that would show, should City Council choose to increase that reserve, what the incremental cost would be and what the total amount of the reserve would be. So if City Council would want to increase it by 1%, that means we would need to add 60,000 to that 981,000 and maintain that at all times, because that is the requirement of a reserve. If they wanted to increase that reserve to 18, 19, or 20%, um, there, our table shows the, uh, increasing amounts. And increasing our, our reserve to 20% would mean an additional 200,000 that we would have to keep in our reserve and not touch, and be maintained throughout the operating year. Should City Council choose to provide direction to staff to revise or amend the existing fiscal policy reserve, we would come back, uh, to seek approval for that revision. That concludes my report. I'll be happy to answer any questions City Council may have.
Do we have any questions, Staff?
Yes.
Jeff, please.
Okay. My only question, Ms. Fortune? What's, uh, well, actually, I'll have two, because what's the organization that, the government organization you stated that determines the amount, that is it government financial officers?
Yes, association.
Association, okay. How often do they evaluate when that needs, you know, inflation goes up, cost of living goes up, everything goes up, salaries go up? How, and our, so our operating expenses obviously go up. How often do we reevaluate, not to increase the percentage, but just due to the, you know, cause the annual cost of, whatever? Do we reevaluate this ever?
Yes. As your staff, we do. Meaning, let's say, if there was a, an economic downturn. The reserve, once approved by council, means we don't touch it, it's got to be maintained. In our prior cities, we've actually proposed to reduce that reserve down to 10% because we needed to use, uh, that fund balance with the, uh, projection that we were going to return that over a three- or four-month period. And so we've done that in other cities. So me and Mr. Duffy, we do review that reserve every year.
So if our operating expenses this year for two months were X dollars, and then next year it's XY dollars, we will adjust the reserve?
That is correct.
Based on that?
We adjust the reserve based on that.
Right on. Thank you.
Mr. City Manager?
Yes, I'm, it, Mayor, and, uh, so, so one of the things that, that some, uh, councils also do is that when they, when they have additional revenues, what they will do, they will then take that, that 10% or 20, 16.7% and put it toward, uh, the, um, uh, the fund balance, instead of spending the entire one-time dollar amount. So that's, that's another way to do it. And it, that's, that's often done at budget time or doing, you know, quarterly reports.
Thank you. Councilmember Robles?
So in my discussion with the City Manager on this, um, I had been asked about, is it true that we only have a two-month reserve? And I was like, yeah. And I hadn't really considered the ramifications of that. Because if you look at the chart that the City Manager showed, most of my term, we were at at-risk budget. We didn't have, um, uh, we're always in a crisis mode. So it was weird, and what we still don't have in here, as I understand, we don't have the defeasement of the 500,000 in new revenues that we were in this budget yet. So, so in thinking about this is, uh, so, understanding our cash position and looking at that, we do have cash, but they're all still tied to budget, um, requirements. So, so we're still pretty lean, but for me, that I'm comfortable with at this point with this policy is for the reason that, should something happen, we have two months to craft a policy to address it. One of the biggest costs always is furlough, 80, I mean, excuse me, is, is payroll. So 85% of your budget's that. So if we say, well, you know, people are going to take four-hour furlough or whatever, we, we, you know, that may be one of the levers we use, um, freeze capital purchases or whatever, but that gives us a time of, of two months, which is still pretty tight timeframe, because you got to formulate it, and you really don't have, um, two months of meetings to, 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 to look at it. But, um, at least for myself and for the public, we're refreshed on what this is, what's, and, and maybe, um, we just make it a policy that every time we do, um, our annual budgeting, and we have all the new revenues, that we, we also decide, you know, are we comfortable with that? Because we can say 1%, 2%, whatever, but I would be probably looking at it, do we need an additional month? And my feeling would be like, no, if the economy's good, revenues are good, why, you know, why, why touch it? But it's important that, you know, the public knows that, um, we may have two months, but, uh, we, you know, we have cash, and the cash is depend, it's really more like, we have cash if you're waiting for property tax revenues to come in. There's the two major drops, you need to have that. Or if you have a grant and, and whatever. But we can't fool ourselves that we have all this cash that's not obligated anywhere else. So, but, so just to summarize, I'm comfortable with a two-month policy, um, and that may, that we just, you know, each budget cycle, look at, revisit our policy so we don't have to ask you for a special report. That's all.
Yes, Councilmember Robles, what we can do during the budget process too, is make a proposal to set aside, let's say, a fixed amount to add to the fund balance, like 50,000 every year over a certain period. Yeah. Um, not, not, you know, get all the excess, but maybe slowly set aside and slowly build up that fund balance.
That's excellent. Just like this, the, the state's doing. Thank you. Mayor Protem?
I'm going to share a concern, because I know at the Long, Long Beach Conference that we went to, wasn't the first time we'd heard that the state of California likes to legislate and then not supply the money to be able to implement. In that idea, I'm thinking that back in the day when I used to actually do big business stuff, uh, we would ordinarily put kind of a, almost a placeholder in a budget. So if we had an anticipated cost, we had a column besides our real contracted costs, what we thought we were going to have to do for cost of completion, and then we would put an anticipated cost in there, and then, and anticipa-, anticipated cost wouldn't be a, a miscellaneous, it would actually be identified for where we thought we had a soft number. And you didn't use them for things like, oh, well, you know, our, our salaries are going to go up and that stuff. You can usually forecast that stuff, that's nickel-and-dime stuff. But if the state of California has legislated affordable housing that we have to participate, participate in, and it ends up, by the time they get done with the implementation, ends up being a big bill that we get handed. Or, for example, CalPERS, when they don't make their nut for the year, and we now get a big bill from CalPERS that says, hey, guess what? You know, we didn't make it, so, uh, you got to add it up. How to, how do we address those kinds of time-sensitive emergencies? That's all, that's the only thing I'm really concerned about. The rest of it's small peanuts.
Well, you know, w- w- one of the things that, um, the, the council, um, can consider is, obviously, we do quarterly reports, uh, but as you prepare for the budget or prepare for the new budget, you're going to have some sort of competing resources, as you said, just like CalPERS, or additional law enforcement, or, um, or additional law enforcement, or, or trying to, to, to increase your fund balance. Because really, when you get to the end of the year, you may have some extra procedure or one-time money. And one-time money's a great way to ship it into the, to the fund balance, to be able to support the fund balance. Or you may want to find a, a particular project you're working on. And one of the things that this council's been very savvy on is not taking one-time resources and committing them to long-term programs, because it doesn't, that doesn't work out too well. And so, I think that one of the pauses that you have too is that Ms. Fortune is very, very conservative in terms of her, her, her financial projections. And so, she provide, she's not going to over-project, and we have that conversation all the time, where I may be more optimistic, and she's more of a realist. And so, we have that conversation. When we come to the council, and we have a number for you that say maybe 3%, she's agreed, and I've agreed on 3%, I think it's a much rosier number, but we're going to be okay with 3%. And often, you know, we're either right on target or we're, we're a little over. So those are the ways in terms of, that you can project, is in terms of, when you get to the budgetary process and you're, you're looking at your revenues, and, you know, one of the things that's important is by having the first quarter, second quarter, and third quarter review, you're able to see what's actually happening. Because if you wait, you know, if you approve the budget in, in June, and you wait till April the next year to think about the budget again, that's a train that just won't, you can't stop it. You've made some decisions that, you know, when you do your budget in June, you're basing your information on, on three-quarters worth of information. So when we come back in September, we're coming back and we're telling you, yes, our assumptions were right, and then, and the numbers came, came through. If we don't do that, and we were off in, off in, in June, then now you're making decisions on, on data of that, now you're in September and you haven't made the correction yet. So, so I think the process in which the council's established, where you're doing the quarterly reports and getting the monthly reports, it's kind of showing you where the big-ticket items are. If your property taxes aren't coming in the way they should be, or your sales taxes aren't coming the way they should be, those are great indicators, and it's time for us to huddle and, and have an alternative strategy.
Great. Thank you. And the only other question I would have, when we do these quarterly reviews, or if they're every four months or whatever, in, in the long run, do we close out those, say, close out that soft line item and then formulate for the, for the forward, you know, like in an allocation process? Or do we just wait to do that then down to the end of the year? In other words, if we have a contingency item, which is what I would consider a, a soft cost, and, and it doesn't look like we're going to end up using all of it, and you're saying that we usually try to carry over and at least maintain our buffer? If we've got, in addition, funds in addition to that, do we then close that out, take those funds and dump them over into a, into a separate accounts that, a separate account that we know is technically your one-time money?
It, it falls to fund balance. So if we have more than what is budgeted, we report that as you see, but if it's not expended, or you know, like you said, we know you're not, we know we're not going to use it, it automatically falls to fund balance.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Robles?
Just one final thing. When we had our priorities workshop, I believe, that it came up that we don't have a capital reserve fund. So as our city hall is over, was it 30 years old? I just imagine, I just remember working for the county, and we're sitting, and springs were coming up from the, from the seats and all that. And when we had a public event, and I use the bathrooms out there, you know, things are, are deteriorating, so I, I would just like to, to see us have that discussion. And working for the county during the, one of the, the big downturns, we didn't have a contra account for employee separations. So we had people retiring, and we owed them $86,000, and that wasn't budgeted anywhere. So I had to go and rob other places. So I know we may, we may have to start small, but, but at least give us some, some, the council some alternatives, so, you know, my peers and us can collectively decide what we'd like to do.
Yes, Councilmember Robles, at the next budget season, like I said, we can propose all these funds that we can set aside and start building them up slowly.
All right. Are there any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right. So we've had some discussion, we've given some direction to have staff come back. Mr. City Manager, if you would, please summarize what you're going to come back with.
Absolutely. So during the primary budget cycle, what we'll do, we'll come back to the council with an ability to identify any additional one-time monies that we have, and then we'll also be able to let the council know that we will identify the different sort of categories in which those proceeds, if the council wants them to be, to be placed in. For example, councilperson Robles mentioned capital, capital improvement replacement. And we've actually had that in the past, but then we, we depleted those resources. But then the other thing too is employee separation. So we can lay out those different categories for the, for the council, and then the council, as part of the budgetary process, can, can look at how they want to fund, fund those particular items. We can even come up with, the council can come up with the percentage of what they'd like to see, and that we can have an automatic distribution of that.
Does that address all the, all the directives that we've given for staff to come back with? All right. So I'll make a motion that we give that direction?
I'll second it.
All right. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with councilmembers Allen, Hesse, and Robles voting yes, Mayor Protem Wilson voting yes, and Mayor Matnabo voting yes.
Thank you. So our next item is to review the city of Grand Terrace, California, public employees' retirement system, or CalPERS unfunded liabilities. Assistant City Manager, Cynthia Fortune?
One more time, Mayor. Mayor Protem, City Council, good evening. Before your review is the, the city's CalPERS unfunded accrued liability. Again, our vision statement, this supports city council goal number one, through the continuous monitoring of our actual revenues and expenditures against budget appropriations. On this overview, we'll just go through our pension plans, our tiers, the basic formula, the CalPERS pension buck, the CalPERS investment servings over the last 20 years, investment earnings, and our unfunded liability. So the CalPERS public agency plans are pre-funded, annual contributions are set aside during the employee's tenure, and this is a combination of employer-making contributions and the employee also. And the goal is to make sure that we have sufficient funds for that employee when they retire. So this can be over a five, 10, 15, 20, 30 period, depending on how long the employee works. So the city has three tiers. Anyone hired prior to 2013 gets a retirement benefit of 2.7% at age 55. Any existing CalPERS members who were hired into the city after January 1st of 2013 will do the highest three-years average compensation, 2% at age 60. And those who were hired after 2013, who were not CalPERS members, are in the third tier, which is called PEPRA. This is the public employees' retirement system. And again, it's an average of the three highest years, 2.0 at age 62. And the current city staffing, most of our staff is currently in PEPRA. So the basic formula shows that there are three funding sources, employer contributions, employee contributions, and of course, the investment returns that CalPERS projects and hopes to receive each time they invest the city's funds. So the basic formula is that the contributions from both employer and employee, and any, any interest earned has to equal all the benefits, or all the retirement pension that we're going to pay out to that retiree, plus any CalPERS administrative expense. I did ask them how much the admin expense is, because they are a nonprofit, and they are run by a lot of government agencies. I believe it's a quarter of a percent, that's what their cost is. So it's really minimal. So the bulk of the investment income and the contributions actually go towards an employee's So what I wanted to show is, when we made this presentation several years ago, I had the CalPERS pension buck, of which that dollar, 67 cents, or 67% comes from investment earnings, 21% from the employer, and 12% from CalPERS members. Since we had that, since their projections did not reach what they wanted, they discounted the percent from 7.5 to 7%. So in 2018, the investment is now 59, so the bulk of that decrease actually went towards the employers. We used to be paying 21%, now we're actually paying 28%, and that's our contribution now. And an employee who used to contribute 12% is now contributing 13%. And again, as I mentioned, because they didn't realize their expected rates of return. So I did a, a research on, on their website, and these are the rates of returns that CalPERS has seen in the last 22 years. And it'll show when they had downturns. If you looked at 2001 and '02, they actually lost. And they tried to come back in 2003 with 3%, but in 2008 and '09, they lost five. And really, the biggest hit was in 2009 of 24%. Every time they have a loss, let's say 2001 or 2002, they actually get that loss and they amortize it over 30 years. They don't come back and say, okay, city, you got to pay back that loss, because your retiree, well, they haven't yet. They don't call up the retiree to say, sorry, we lost money, we can't keep paying you your pension. We continue to do so. And as you can see, 2012 was also a bad year, 2015 and 2016. So their latest, 2018, again, the goal was 7%, still didn't quite make it, at 6.7. I did research earlier, 2019, they did make 7.7. But when they do it over a five, 10, and 20-year period, this is what their averages have been. Even if they had high interest rates on the years that are teens, the loss really took its toll. And so this is what their average annualized return has, yeah, this is what they've actually seen. So to, to look at our balance and to provide the city council of what we actually pay annually, in this current year, we paid almost 450,000. Next year, we're going to pay 485, and by '21, '22, we're going to pay 533,000. So every time we do a budget, that is always a huge consideration, yeah, because it is jumping up by 40,000 or 50,000 every year. Yeah, and it takes a, a big bite out of, like you said, when we have increased revenues. Unfortunately, this is one of those that actually takes quite a bite out of those additional revenues that we do earn.
And so, Mayor, you know, one of the things, Mayor and Council, to, to look at this particular chart, is you can really see that, if, if you look at the, at the line for PEPRA, the, the PEPRA system, which is not as an enriched retirement system, that's actually working. They're saying in 30 years, if everyone's on PEPRA, everything will be just fine. What's happening, so it's not your current employees today, you're paying for all your retirees, and they, and the investment that hasn't occurred. And, and, you know, I can say it, Ms. Fortune has said it, everyone on the council knows it now, PERS has a system where they take your money and they invest it. And if they don't get the gains that they, they promised you, then you have to pay them to make up that difference. And so that's what you're seeing in, in the tier one. You're seeing those huge numbers from the number of employees and the, and the, the PERS losses. And so that's a really important chart to really look at, to see what's actually happening.
But what I also wanted to show council is our total liability. So if you look at each, our total liability for tier one, and these are all employees that are with us, have retired or separated, our total liability is 15.9 million. The city has already submitted 10.7 million to CalPERS. So they have 10.7 million of our funds, because it's through all the contributions. Our unfunded accrued liability at this time is 5.1. So as Mr. Duffy is mentioning, if you look at tier two and PEPRA, we are 88, 90% funding those funds. Yeah, we have the bulk of what is required for the number of employees that we have currently in that. So if we add them all, because we do have three tiers, our total unfunded liability is 5.2, so we're 68% funded. I just also wanted to, to add that we have met and we continue to meet our annual retirement obligations. We have never had to call CalPERS, and there have some other cities that have had to do that, to say that they couldn't pay. But we have almost met ours both for our normal retirement and our unfunded accrued liability. And as I say, when we prepare a budget every year, this is a very huge consideration, we always look into this. Unfortunately, it's always one of the top priorities before we look at other requests or increases that we would like to show. So that concludes my report on unfunded accrued liability. I'll be happy to answer any questions city council may have.
When we make our payments, we are paying down part of that unfunded liability?
Yes, yes, we are.
Okay. Councilmember Allen?
I'd like to, I, I was intrigued by this chart you have that shows the rates of return over the last several years. And I would like to, yeah, and, you know, you had this little formula earlier, C plus I equals B plus E. Contributions plus investment income equals benefits paid plus expenses. And I know that the, they say the left side, which is the income, has to balance with the right side, the benefits and expenses. And, and if that is not the case, then the contributions have to increase.
Yes.
My question is, when the rate of return is as high as 20%, which is almost three times what CalPERS goal was, why is that not balancing out the bad years for us?
Well, you have more people joining, more people retiring. Yeah, so if they had 20% in 1997, CalPERS would have told you, we are 99% funded, or we are 98%.
Yeah. I'm seeing, I'm seeing 11% two years ago. I'm seeing in 2014, 18%, 13% before, you know, we focus on those red numbers, but if you look at the over, the, there's some pretty big, good rates of return there in the past, you know, few years. And I just don't understand, if they're so ready to make us pony up, to bring it up to, to, when they're short-falling, when they don't meet their goals, why are they not reciprocating back whenever they far exceed their goals? You know, I know that we can't, we don't have that kind of influence, we're a little city, but I'd like to learn that from you, if it's possible.
When they also have a good year, sort of, they amortize those gains over a 30-year period, they do the same, with the gain and with the loss. I think the biggest hit was in 2009, was that 24%. I don't know that they have fully recovered from that. As, like I said, even if they had all these high numbers, when you look at their annualized, their annualized rate of return and what that did, all they've actually done for the last 20 years is 5%. Yeah, that, unfortunately, that has, what is the effect of that.
The way it averaged out?
Yes, that's what it averaged out to. And remember, their goal was seven. So they're not, you know, their annualized return, they're not meeting, they met it in their 10-year goal. And these are reports that they always print out, because I pulled this from the CalPERS website. So you're right, those double digits, and, and, you know, like I said, they keep trying, they keep doing different kinds of investments, they, they, they talk about their policy on their website, yeah. They look at what they invest, what they don't invest, you know, because it is quite a bit of employees that are in that, in that pension.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Robles?
Yeah, I was just going to state, when, under Gray Davis, when they changed the contribution, excuse me, how, the years of service excuse me, the years of service and the age. Okay, so they were saying, I don't say, say, just say it was ninety-seven, and they had a nineteen percent. So they were telling little old Grand Terrace, who doesn't have any power, according to you, and others, that it's all the boogeyman state, you know. You didn't have to, we didn't have to drop off, jump off the cliff of everybody else and offer it to our employees. So what you had was, you lowered the retirement age and you added percentages, and people didn't contribute for all those years. So, and they were telling cities and counties at that time, "With this rate of returns, you will never have to reach into your own pocket again to support this." So that's what the issue is. So now then you have the good and the bad years, and if you look, that we had some, a very good year in investments. So, but, you know, we gotta just remember, how did we get here and we got here? The other issue that in Sacramento they brought up is the other post-employment benefits. And so there's a lot of benefits that people get, and they're waiting for some court cases, you know, on that. So there's a lot of loaded costs in here, and it wasn't Sacramento that imposed it on the city of Grand Terrace. This city council, whoever that was at that time, decided to offer their employees the same, the same sweet deal, you know. So, thank you.
Mayor Protem.
I just wanna mention also that these investment houses are business. They pay dividends. At the end of the year, they pay those dividends out of the big, good numbers. And when they hit bad numbers, they don't pay any dividends. But in the long run, that's where some of the money goes. Just because we're in there and we're dumping our money in there, you know, as as an investment in our retirement plan, doesn't mean that it's just static. So that's part of the answer. That's how that number starts to melt down. The good years go down because of that.
Mr. City Manager.
Yes, Mayor, just to, just to kinda comment on, or just to support what Councilperson Robles said. And what it's called, it's called superfunded. And so at the time, they were telling agencies that, as she said, because of these returns, we're superfunded, you can add more benefits without having to pay any additional contributions. And so the other problem that CalPERS is having is that because CalPERS is, public policy is coming into play with their investment pool. There are some, there are some investments which the investors would like to put the money in, but because of policy and things like that, so they're hindered in terms of high returns. Like they might not be able to invest in tobacco, because that might be, might be a rule. And so CalPERS is saying, well, the state legislature is making us or not allowing us to invest what we believe is prudently, because we're looking at public policy instead. So that's another hindrance that they're having. And so everything is right on point. These numbers over time, and you look at the, you know, and we get the information a couple of years behind. So we think, I'm hearing that, oh, CalPERS has a fourteen percent return, but then I'm getting a letter from CalPERS saying, "You owe X number of dollars." 'Cause, you know, it's, that's why one of the things the council did was, in this last budget cycle, you allotted some additional resources to allow us to get an actuarial immediately in terms of where we are to this day. If you ask Miss Fortune for that, she can run that system for you and tell you exactly what the percentages are in terms of where we are. And the other thing, too, is to always remember, is our goal is a hundred percent funded. But what is the reality number? What's the real number that we oughta say, "Okay, we're okay with this"? I don't think sixty-eight percent is the number, but at some point in time, there is a number that we can say, "Okay, we're comfortable with this."
Councilmember Hesse.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Cynthia, for your report. I first got into council, it's, this CalPERS was a headache. I went to numerous classes for the League of City and everything, and then I tried to comprehend it with my own retirement, which is a 401K, plus I paid social security. And everybody knows in real life, your 401K, you're gonna be ups and downs, but that's on you. You don't have a person sitting there that's like, "Oh, if it's down, we're gonna go ahead and fund you the rest." So that's why, you know, like Mr. Duffy said, that CalPERS can't invest in certain areas because, you know, it's against the state to go to that area, 'cause they don't believe on their ethics or moral obligations. But just to sum it up, that what I see and the investors see, besides this being confusing CalPERS, and not the average person gets a guaranteed seven and a half percent investment back, or had to guarantee like Rule seventy-two, where you get your money, you want to double it in so many years and compound your interest, is that the, you know, the state's investments are bad, and then every time that we have to come up with a shortfall, it hurts those taxpayers, you know. We have to, the city has to get money and pay extra, we lose police force, we lose other obligations. So it's, you know, for Cynthia Fortune to comprehend this and then, you know, give this to us in layman's terms, I appreciate it very much. And as an average citizen out there, it doesn't make any sense for a person that's retiring and how they're getting that. And, you know, and I know our employees here, they don't make a small fortune when they retire. They're just doing their job and they're, you know, hoping to get that nest egg at the end. So it's not their fault, you know, I always blame it, I blame it on the big people up there in Sacramento and CalPERS is one of those entities I blame it on. But thank you, Cynthia, for your layman terms on this, and it really helps out every time I listen to it. So I appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Robles.
Yeah, I just wanted to share that CalPERS has brought all their investment people in-house now. So they're not paying these massive fees anymore, which was a good thing. But they did say they're having, there's one last person they're trying to entice to come from the big financial centers of international finance into Sacramento, and they're having a hard time. I thought that was, but that was a good, a good thing that they've done is, and then that way you're not paying all these fees.
All right, thank you. Any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, we'll bring it back to council, I'll make a motion to receive and file.
I'll move, Mayor, that we receive and file.
Second.
Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with councilmembers Allen, Hesse, and Robles voting yes, Mayor Protem Wilson voting yes, and Mayor McNovo voting yes.
Thank you. We'll move to item ten, which is amend annual budget guidelines effective immediately to reinstate staff merit increases, which could cost up to sixteen thousand for the current fiscal year, and add language to review and update city council salary. Mr. Duffy, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. As the mayor indicated, this staff report recommends that the council change the budget guidelines, thereby reinstating staff merit increases, and add language to the budget guidelines to ensure annual discussions on council compensations for compliance with California Government Code Section three six five one six. So in June twelfth, two thousand nineteen, the city council had priority workshops. And part of those purposeful priority workshops is provide council with an opportunity to reiterate its priorities and provide alignment of staff resources allocations with the council priorities and review organizational capacity. So an example of what some of those priorities were. So the council established that we, a top priority, something that we wanted to accomplish this year, a high priority, something that if we could accomplish this year was great, but it was still on the radar. And then a priority, which was important, but it might take more than a year or so to accomplish those things. I wanna bring your attention to two of the items that were on this, to give an example. This was the annual evaluation and merit increases, or reinstate those to the employees. For about a decade, the city council and prior councils did not have budget guideline policies that did not allow for automatic merit step increases. And when I say automatic, is when an employee is, receives a positive evaluation and they are able to, they're within their salary range, if they're, they're still, if they're A to E, if they're in that range and they're in, say, C, with a positive evaluation, normally that employee would receive a merit increase. But based upon our budget policies and our past, the previous councils were unable to do that. And so part of the discussion tonight is to be able to modify that budget guidelines. And so basically, our budget guidelines for the last decade or so has indicated that as we build, as we build our budgets, we would not include merit step increases or COLA increases. And so by modifying the language immediately and then in future budgets, that would be an automatic where we would turn to normal, and those employees that are eligible for merit step increases and have positive evaluations would be able to receive those. In addition to that, we've also talked about the review of health benefits and compensation. And one of the things that the council did in this year's budget was to adjust the compensation for the health benefits by fifty dollars annually, I'm sorry, monthly for the employees. So to reinstate the merit increases, the council would approve the budget guidelines and calling for suspending of merit step increases. Staff request council reinstate merit step increases and remove language from the future budget guidelines. And then employees with satisfactory evaluations will receive step increases if applicable. And once again, I say if applicable, if there's a step in the range for them to be able to move to once they receive a positive evaluation. So the fiscal impact for this year would be about sixteen thousand dollars. And Cynthia and I have gone through the, Miss Fortune and I have gone through the budget, and we certainly believe that we can accommodate this in this year's budget without any requests for appropriations. Next in this staff report, it was, this was California Government Code Section three six five one six. And so what we're trying to do is establish the council salaries for general law cities based on population ranges. Now, Government Code Section three six five one six establishes ranges for council salaries throughout the state of California based on population. So, and the council can only modify by ordinance, five percent increments. So a particular council who would get an ordinance would only be able to adjust those salaries based upon their established range in the beginning by only five percent. And the ordinance passed to raise council compensation takes effect after an election. So the sitting council is not gonna be raising their current salaries. The law doesn't allow for that, the election has to occur, and then the remaining members or if someone is re-elected, they would then benefit from that additional compensation. So staff recommendation to the council is to add language to the budget guidelines to ensure ordinance is presented during budget to allow council to consider adjustments to council compensations for compliance with Government Code Section three six five one six point five. And what that means is that during every budget cycle, the council would be, as part of our budget preparation, there would be an ordinance presented to the council, to, the council would vote on to determine if they want to adjust the already established dollar amounts for council compensation. And once again, that adjustment cannot exceed more than five percent. And I believe, I'm now ready for any questions the council may have then.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy. Councilmember Hesse.
Mr. Duffy, on the merit increases, will this help our city maintain longevity for some of our employees that, you know, are leaving just because they're not getting a merit increase, or?
Yes, sir, I believe so. When an employee receives a positive evaluation and they have the ability to move through the ranks, it would certainly help in terms of, it's a reward for doing a job well done.
When was the last merit increases that was approved or we had, do you remember?
So I believe in two thousand seventeen or two thousand sixteen, the council authorized to, first of all, what we did was you took away the furlough, so we had full competent forty-hour work week. And then you authorized a one-time merit step increase for those that were qualified.
Okay, and the merit increase, is that gonna affect the CalPERS also?
There would be a slight adjustment in CalPERS, yeah, absolutely. Paid by the employee and also by the employer.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Robles.
So my understanding that we were to expect sometime an employee compensation study. So when, 'cause that will be telling us if we're compensating our employees to whatever cities we would compare to. So that would answer a question if we're paying our employees adequately.
Absolutely. So currently, Councilperson Robles, we have hired the consultant to do the class and comp study. And what they will do is they will do comparisons to, like, cities in the region, and they'll tell us where we are in terms of the marketplace. If we are at a hundred percent or we're thirty percent below, whatever, and they'll bring that back to the council, and then we'll show the council, and the council will actually make some policy decisions in terms of where they would like to be, to be competitive.
'Cause I thought we were gonna get that in October. I don't know where I came up with that, but when do we expect it?
Um, Miss Fortune, you wanna?
Councilmember Robles will be submitting this to you next month.
Okay, thank you.
All right, that's the last question that I have. So any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you. We'll bring it back to council. How would we like to direct staff on this?
Well.
Councilmember Allen.
Mayor, the recommendation is to review and amend the annual budget guidelines to take effect immediately. So I'll, it's not, is it calling for a motion or just to give direction?
You know, it would, it would be a motion.
Okay, then I'll make, I'll make the motion for number one, reinstate staff merit increases. and number two, add language to review and possibly update the city council salaries permitted by state law as part of the annual budget process.
I second that motion.
All right, any further discussion? Please vote.
Motion passes with councilmembers Allen and Robles voting yes, Mayor Pro, I'm sorry, Mayor McNovo voting yes, Councilmember Hesse and Mayor Protem Wilson vote no.
Thank you. And so we will expect a report on the salary surveys next month?
Yes.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to section I of our agenda, which is requests for, Mr. City Attorney, you had a comment?
Yeah, just briefly, just to clarify for the council and the public, just to make sure, this is just amending the annual budget guidelines, and it would have the two effects that you indicated. One would be reinstating the staff merit increases, and two, adding language to the budget guidelines regarding a review of council salary annually. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item I is request for future agenda items by city council. And so pursuant to city council policy, if a council member is interested in a task or project that will require more than one hour of staff time to complete, the item is agendized and council is asked if time should be spent on preparing a report on that proposed item. And so pursuant to requirements of the Brown Act, no other items will be considered other than those listed below tonight. And we have three requests. So the first request for discussion on need for greater speed reduction and control in the city, as requested by Mayor Protem Doug Wilson. So Mayor Protem.
On the issue of speed and noise, our community has changed. It's incumbent upon us as a body of representatives to preserve quality of life. Our general plan finds circulation and noise to be significant elements, excuse me, that have the potential to exact impact upon the citizens of Grand Terrace. Impact that violates reasonable limits is established by law demands an action to either cease or to mitigate. In the forty-two years since nineteen seventy-eight, the developed area of Grand Terrace has substantially increased in area, where there were groves and vacant fields, there are now roads and buildings, and communities beyond our city limits have multiplied the impact. Passed-through traffic on Barton Road has tripled. Speeds on arterial, collectors, and local streets have gotten ridiculous. Rather than watch our quality of life degrade further, I believe it's about time for a change. I propose that this body enlists the services of a qualified traffic engineer to update our reference material. We owe it to ourselves to get creative with our solutions. For example, the city of Rialto slows their downtown traffic to thirty miles an hour, and where they have wider expanses with no entrances on them, they might push them back up into, say, forty miles an hour. And that seems to be a bugaboo for us, because bottom line is, we're gonna have a bunch of people ripping off the freeway. And if we let them do what they usually do, they could easily get up to fifty miles an hour through. hour through portions of the city. Right now, we have areas that could easily qualify for thirty-five, or maybe even thirty, if we follow Rialto's path, and those areas are higher than that. And so what happens, it compounds. Without any help from a traffic engineer that's qualified for this, it's hard for us to make good decisions. And I think it's, it's going to help us be creative with our solutions. We need not only enforcement, but we also need the tools for the enforcement. And so if we've got our plan pretty well unified over the entire city, I think it makes it a lot better for us, because there's so many changes. Do we really need freeway speeds and noise in our town? We get plenty of that from the two fifteen every day, and we're going to get more. And we have every reason to believe that the completion of the Barton Road interchange will add as many as ten thousand cars a day on Barton alone. The contract we signed with the sheriff's office, I want to point out though, also is to provide our enforcement is lump sum inclusive. It is not up to us to be the experts. They said they take care of enforcement of the laws, no matter what it is. And that may have been signed back in zero Doc. thirty, but it's still in force. More aggressive, oh, I'm sorry, every year we extend that agreement and fund a cost of living increase. More aggressive enforcement of traffic laws by our police agency is essential to our peace of mind. I propose, in addition to the first proposal, that we act as soon as possible to ensure more aggressive enforcement and provide whatever tools necessary to transfer our community into the peaceful living environment we deserve.
Okay, so you're?
Yeah, I'm sorry, to clarify, speed and noise go hand in hand.
Okay, so your, your motion is that we have staff come back with an item where we will discuss moving forward on another agenda item for the need for greater speed reduction and control in the city.
My proposal is, is that we authorize the city manager to go out to bid for a traffic engineer that will do what I talked about.
Okay, but, but what we're looking at here is a request for future agenda items. So it would come back, and we would discuss that.
Correct.
All right, so that's your motion. Is there a second?
A second.
All right. Okay, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with councilmembers Allen, Hussey, and Robles voting yes, Mayor Protem Wilson voting yes, and Mayor Magna Bo voting yes.
All right, so we'll request, and next one is request to discuss planning commission need to review the city's general plan and direct staff to prepare a schedule. Mayor Protem, Doug Wilson.
Subdivision MAP Act, fortunately, this is a little bit shorter. Subdivision MAP Act and State of California Code standards strongly recommend general plan review by municipalities every five years. The last time the Grand Terrace General Plan was reviewed was two thousand ten. And prior to that, I participated as a volunteer in the General Plan Task Force in nineteen ninety-four. As of January two thousand twenty, in Governor Gavin Newsom's signature on many bills affecting affordable housing, combined with the fact that we are already five years overdue on our recommended review, constructed to maintain plan concurrence with current conditions, I propose the city council authorize the city manager to move forward with preparations including appropriate outreach to ensure public participation. The council may want to place special emphasis on affordable housing solutions, and a separate redevelopment scheme for twenty to forty years into the future. Special consideration can also be devoted to specific plan areas that will best accommodate remaining infill conditions. Those are all issues that have been brought before this body, and sometimes we have to kind of kick the can down the road. So I think it's time for us to do our general plan review again.
All right, so that's your motion, I'll second it.
Motion passes unanimously with councilmembers Allen, Hussey, and Robles voting yes, Mayor Protem Wilson voting yes, and Mayor Magna Bo voting yes.
And lastly, request to revise the city, city's municipal code to authorize city council to appoint the city planning commissioner chair. Mayor Protem, Doug Wilson.
Thank you. Last and but not least, I have had a couple of ex parte conversations over the phone in relation to this issue. Some kind of, they've expressed concern about council appointment of the planning commission chair might threaten the independent nature of the commission. Let me just state, our current code provides for a musical chairs form of planning commission chair appointment by a majority consent of the commissioners. With the chair, with the change from the majority consent mayor oral appointment to an elected mayor, I believe it is long overdue to consider the gravity of the office of planning commission chair and the responsibilities involved significant enough to warrant appointment following staff review, recommendation, and council consideration. In addition, the issue of annual terms bears discussion. In other words, right now, the code provides for a one-year term. And one-year term, as we know, would be not very long to get your feet wet. If, if we are truly following the game plan of a, of a citizens review board, you know, you're dumping somebody in there that may not understand the nomenclature, they're going to need to understand, you know, basic planning tools and so on, and in just one year, if all of a sudden they become a planning commission chair, that's going to be a lot to load on anybody. After twenty-one years of planning commission experience, including sixteen years as chair, it would seem expedient to avoid any political conflict that might result from jockeying for position in the council's advisory planning commission. The business of the commission should be focused solely upon commission review and recommendation to the city council. So I recommend that we look at that one for an agenda item.
Okay, so a motion to bring that back for discussion. And is there a second?
So I'll second it, but are we discussing it now?
No. No, it will come, it will come back, it will come back on the agenda for an actual discussion.
Oh, all right then.
He was, he was garnering support for his motion.
Holy moly, you had support.
All right, so motion and second, please vote.
Motion passes with councilmember Allen and Hussey voting yes, Mayor Protem Wilson voting yes, Mayor Magna Bo voting yes, councilmember Robles votes no.
All right, thank you. So city manager communications.
Thank you, Mayor. Just very briefly, this two thousand twenty activity guide is actually being delivered to residents' homes, and some of our, some have already told me they've received them. And so I think we're getting some good response on that, informations there. In addition to that, we have the rabies vaccination clinic that's going to be occurring on February nineteenth, that's a Wednesday, from six to seven thirty P M, here at City Hall. And there's low-cost rabies vaccinations, ten dollars for rabies vaccinations, twenty dollars for Avid microchipping. And so it's very important, you can't get your dog registered without having the proper rabies vaccination. So we will be promoting this event over the next couple of weeks. In addition to that, we're going to put a hold the date for the State of the City address, going to be occurring on February twenty-second, at six P M at the Blue, at the Vista Blue Mountain, which is formerly Brookdale, at two two three two five Barton Road. And finally, it's going to be our annual walk on Blue Mountain, scheduled for the first Saturday in March. We alternate Saturday, Sunday, so this is the first Saturday in March, March seventh at eight A M. And people can, can meet up at the, at Palm and Honey Hill Drive. That completes my report, Mayor.
Community guide will be online as well?
It is online.
All right, thank you. All right, we do not have a closed session tonight. And so we will adjourn to our next regular city council meeting, which will be held Tuesday, February eleventh, two thousand twenty, at six P M. Any request to have an item placed on future agenda must be made in writing and submitted to the city count, city clerk's office, and the request will be processed in accordance with council procedure. Mr. Duffy.
I'm sorry, Mayor, the, the date on the State of the City is February the twenty-seventh.
Oh.
I'm so sorry for that mistake.
I would have shown up on the twenty-second, no one would have been there.
But we will make, we haven't gone out, nothing's gone out yet, so we'll make sure that we make sure it's the twenty, twenty-seventh. Thank you, city clerk.
All right, we are adjourned.